Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Perth's Council this sixteenth day of September. I'd like to call our meeting to order if everyone could please bow their head for a moment of reflection. Thank you. We need a motion to approve the agenda, so the agenda as prepared for the September sixteen twenty twenty five meeting of council, the township of Perth East be approved as received. Moved by Amanda, second by Hugh, on favor. Harry, if you have the canary interest, you can disclose that now as the meeting goes along. We have twelve items under consent agenda. Is there any item anyone would like told or they have questions on? Seeing none, we have a motion that items five point one point one to five point one point twelve is set out on the consent agenda for the September sixteen. Regular meeting of council be received for information and the minutes of September third twenty twenty five regular council meeting be adopted. By Andrew, second by Amanda, all in favor, carried. Okay, under presentations, we have no public presentations. We do have two other presentations. And our first presentation is from Matthew Livingston. He is the citizen representative for the Perth County OPP detachment board, and we have with us Tyler Stewart. He's the detachment commander regarding the Perth County OPP detachment board as well, and you're going to give our annual activity report. So, welcome, gentlemen. It's great to see us. And the floor is yours.
The enacted just in the last year and twenty twenty four, it says twenty nineteen, but it took a while to go through legislation as most things do. Part of that is that you will get an annual report from the police services board within OPP. So, as Mayor indicated, I have Inspector Stewart with me tonight. He has newly joined us in Perth County. Our previous divisional commander had been promoted, and we're thankful for that. She did a wonderful job, and we're happy to have Tyler with us here continuing on. So I do understand we're short on time, so I will not go through all of these things, but I will just indicate a few of the higher points and then open for any questions that may be for us. So obviously, the purpose of the Police Services Board within municipalities and through areas within the OPP is to provide civilian oversight. If you look at the new naming of the Police Services Act being the community safety first, police and then policing being the second part is we want to make sure there's involvement within our communities that is driving and oversight that allows for for our community within policing and how those services are being delivered and what we're focusing on. So we have a quite fulsome board between West Perth, North Perth and Perth East that has the allowance for both a community member and a council member. So for for us, it's myself and Jerry Smith that are the representatives for Perth East. And then we have representatives, as you see on screen, from each area. What we do not have as of today is two provincial appointees. I do check the provincial appointees website quite frequently, and those things are rolling through. And I have brought that conversation up as well at multiple times with our our MPP. And we're looking to have two people fill those those two vacancies. So hopefully, by the time we have this conversation next year, you will see those additional members. So what you will see is, you know, a regular meeting with a quorum of those individuals representing Perth County. Our chair right now is Mayor Todd Kasonberg. So and and Jerry Smith is our vice chair. So both of those individuals are helping to organize and keep our meetings on track. And we have a recording secretary, Rachel, right now, which is Jane Hudson, which you may know through name and through email as the clerk of the municipality of West Perth. So he came on most probably in the last few months as well, who's been very helpful to us with his experience with other police services boards that he's supported past. So some policies have been created and worked on. Part of the Community Safety Policing Act is allowed boards to be able to create some of their own local policies within the scope of policing and without touching operational activities. And to do so, we've started with a fuse few to begin with, and that is our terms of reference, which you guys will be quite aggressive as well. This is something that is quite standard in a municipal level, but basically letting our purposes or structure or mandate, our membership and the responsibilities of the boards. We want to make sure it was clear within our first year of what our purposes and what we're setting out to do within the community. As well, we have an abuse policy. So looking at our standards, how we respectfully work within our confines and work within anti harassment and anti abuse type of process as we address the public and the public's concerns or anything that they bring forward towards the policing within our. So everything is, of course, public. Everything we do is public. All our meetings are posted publicly. And there is obviously full disclosure on anything that we make from decisions within the police services board that's available to everybody within Perth County or in Ontario if they question anything that is under under review. Training compliance is a big component, so we did get some standardized training that was rolled out to us under the Community Safety Policing Act. So we do have human rights and equity, understanding systemic racism, and then also cultural awareness. And we also need to look a lot at First Nations Inuit and Mat persons, as this was a big expansion under the the CSPA versus the prior Police Services Act. So there was a lot of changes that came around that, so they wanted to make sure that everybody was equally trained and everybody has completed all of the required training. Insurance was another big thing as we switched. The wording changed from the CSPA. Insurance was a big thing that changed as well. So we had to wait for insurance to be available to us to be able to move forward and actually have meetings. So we're happy to say that through McFarlane Rollins, we are able to join. We were able to join a group policy that covers multiple boards within Ontario. And they've made a product that is available to us that that handles all of the errors and emissions and all the other types of activities that you would like to see under insurance for a board. So that has been enacted, and we've we've just approved to renew that at our last meeting as well. So it was cost effective based on the fact that we had multiple agencies all coming for the same time with the same insurance. Our operating budget, as you guys would be aware of, this is something that's very important, is keeping it to, you know, a minimum. We divide it between the municipalities that are involved. So we want to make sure that we're we're spending every dollar in the most cost effective manner, given that it is public money. So we put that towards training. We put that towards our engagement, our insurance. And also, obviously, the the small reanuberation or the per diem that each member of the board does receive. All the board meetings are posted publicly throughout the the feeder community websites. So we do have that all available for everybody. Everybody can come out to those meetings. They're public meetings. So anybody is able to come and attend those meetings. We do. We could possibly have closed sessions, much like council has. But there is a portion of the meeting that is open to the public. So we do meet right now on a monthly basis unless quorum cannot be met. The expectation under the CSPA is that we were meeting at least three to four times a year, and we're exceeding that. And that's for good reason, and that is because of the amount of work that's being done in this county and how much work is needed by the board to keep our constant connection with the leadership and be able to do things. Oversight reports. So we have oversight reports that show our responsibilities and our and we receive these regular reports from the detachment commander. So Tyler is there to to deliver to us all the highlights and be able to help us understand what's going on from a policing operational perspective within our respective area. And then we can talk about any questions that we may have or any other areas we may need to focus on. One of those things that we focused on a lot over the last little while has been ride programs. And it's also been core community policing, and that means you've seen officers out on bicycles. You've seen them on foot patrols. And you've seen more police cruisers driving through your communities within the core areas, and that is something that we've we've asked to focus on. Another big thing that we've seen a lot on is intimate partner violence, and that is something that the OPP has taken very serious and has been focusing quite heavily on as well. Public transparency and communication. So again, we are fully published on all the the lower tier websites. Again, we encourage people to come out. If you haven't been out to our meetings, we're happy to have you out. We normally have someone from a public agency outside of the OPP that work with the OPP to be able to come and give us discussions oversight on things that they are working on and how it feeds in to the communities through the policing policing services and how it makes a better, stronger community. And we we ask questions and build and foster amongst those those conclusions. So basically, at this point, we are fully functioning board. We are meeting the mandates set out by the the CSPA. We're also fully available to the public. And part of that governance and oversight also feeds into something that came out new under the Community Safety Policing Act. And that is the inspector of policing. The inspector of policing is here to not only take complaints, but also to look at metrics that are coming out of each police services board and be able to draw their own conclusions and start their own investigations based on that information and be able to look into ways that we can better engage policing throughout Ontario and reduce any systemic issues. So we are functioning as a board. We're functioning well with our our leadership within the OPP for our Perth County and and our shared commitments across Ontario. And then we're also obviously meeting all the mandates of training, education, and all of our expectations within the CSPA. So that's our presentation for this evening, and we're open to any questions on what we've been able to achieve over these. And I'll tell you, it wasn't even a full year. This is only from April of last year up until April or up until April of this year, or sorry, January of this year, and then we've started a new year. So a lot of these things that we're speaking on were less than a year's worth of work that we've had to put in.
Thank you. Questions, Amanda?
Thank you for your presentation. More so a comment. Really appreciate all the work that you've done. Just wanted to share the number one issue that I get as a counselor beyond sort of site specific challenges is about speeding. So it is really a challenging thing when I hear, obviously, people wanting council and the municipality to do something about that, because it's not, we're not an enforcement body with respect to speeding. So when you're doing some of your public engagement and comms, it would be great to have a focus on that, or even when you guys have maybe done some of that, to share that with the council. Because I can maybe share some of that knowledge and information with folks that are reaching out to me. The other area that, and I know that OPP West does, I think it's OPP West, the social media. They do a pretty good job already, but of course, just in my ward of Alice, it's very rural and farming. So some of the education around theft around this time of year, like during harvest and planting, because farmers are like leaving their trucks and like leaving their keys, and it's like a very common thing. But also, we're seeing, again, when you have just like traffic and commuters. Again, just like the safety around farm machinery and that kind of thing during this busy time of year. I think you guys do a pretty good job already on that front, and some, I know, Ontario Federation of Agriculture and the local federation does like a pretty good job, but continue to do that, because I think it is really important. But I just wanted to mention this, the speeding piece, just because it is a it's a challenging thing for us, and I always say to people, well, we can make the roads all gravel. People say, oh, no, 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 we don't want to do that, right? Because that would deter speeding a little bit. But anyways, any any tools that you have or updates regarding that would be really helpful around some of the public comms and campaigns.
I'll talk to a couple pieces from the board perspective, and I'll let Tyler chime in as well. So we had the auto theft grant. So there is an auto theft program that is very well developed within Perth County. If you've seen them at hockey tournaments, you've seen them at other public events over the years. Over the year, they're handing out information packages as well as a nice little pouch that your keys can go in. So it can prevent anything from stealing the signal from your keys. But they're also talking about locking your vehicles. They'll talk about the statistics of people leaving their keys in their vehicle, especially trucks and and age demographics in which those you know, those trucks are being stolen from the ownership. So that has been happening. It's continuing. We have had some great success with the funding for the auto theft program. So we continue to drive towards those priorities. From a speeding perspective, hopefully, you guys have seen our big TVs that have been out as well. There was one over on sixty one or sixty two, sixty one, just the other week. So they are moving those screens around for visual awareness, along with what Tyler will talk about. Operationally, they're also looking at anywhere they use the the speed signs within Perth County, where it's it's giving you an idea of your speed as your approach. There's statistical data behind that as well. It obviously doesn't give the person or the plate or anything like that, but it does give statistical data that can help target where they put their officers and and do enforcement, but complaints are always welcome.
I'll just I'll just top up what Matt had said about the auto theft. So it's been around for the last year and a half. They focus in on specifically that auto theft this time here with farm machinery out in the fields, trucks are, you know, parked on the side of the road. So we put together a plan to address that this fall, just with the increased patrols and having more officers out in those areas. So you should be seeing that in our agricultural areas. As for the speeding, just to touch on, we have display boards that, you know, demonstrate, show you the speed awareness piece. But that's followed up also with enforcement. And again, since I've been here for the last three weeks, enforcement's my background. And that's that's what I push for is traffic safety, because with speeding also comes intersection related collisions, which unfortunately tend to help. I do. I do appreciate both those topics and.
And just one other sort of final thing on the speeding thing. So I'm LS Ward, so half of Sebringville is my ward. So I've had this past summer mentioned speeding issues in Sebringville, and they're like, and the OPP is right down the road. So I'm just like flagging that, and there was a lot of inquiries regarding like doing certain things, but it's an MTO road, and it's not something that we have jurisdiction over. And and I think they wanted to create, was it a sidewalk or like there was some sort of crosswalk? Anyways, there was some request, and I looked into it, but we would not be able to get it because we don't meet the thresholds with the MTO. And so, of course, like the average person doesn't know what's a like a lower tier road and a county road and MTO road, right? Like the average person doesn't like think of that. So anyways, there's been a bit of like education that way, but I did. I thought I would flag that that conversation that I had this summer about just even Sebringville, some of the speeding and just young children. And we have obviously not municipally owned, but there is the community center too in the village. So anyways, just wanted to have that on your radar.
You're always welcome to bring anything that you receive from a community standpoint to us. We're willing to hear those. You can give us correspondence. We're happy to pass those along as well. If it, obviously, if it's an emergency, you know, then it needs to go to either the nine one one or it needs to go to the non emergency line if it's not an emergency. But if there's something that's passed along, you can welcome them to reach out, or we can pass that on for them.
Thank you.
Hey, Bob. I'm just gonna reiterate the neck of Amanda's concerns about speeding. We say that's what is about. Doesn't matter whether it's which we hear in Millerton or on any rural road, but especially the failure to stop for school buses and fairly issue we all hear about. So there's an ability to send to our report in public works later tonight. I think that'll capture a fairly typical scenario. It's happening on our rural roads and near our school. The ability to target some meters in those certain hours, I think that'd be ideal. I know personally for them to make, we refer them on. It's hard to get the public to use an emergency number, but again, communication is really important, especially this time of year. So anything we can do, that's a good point. Okay, anyone else?
Yeah, when you're talking about people, we were lucky enough, she dropped last Thursday to have your lead officer. These are the most welcome talk, and that was very, very interesting. And anybody that keeps their keys on the wall in the house, they should put it in a fairy bag, so that way it can't be stolen. But an excellent program, a very good individual gave very good talk. Just one other question, like when you do training and compliance, those specific training that you get, like the post modules, are they something that are publicly available, and somebody could go just read to them, see them, see what they are?
So they're they are provided by the Solicitor General's Office. So I don't know that they're publicly available. They're they're assigned to us through a portal. So I, other than than us being mandated to do that, and I know that's public of what they mandate, but I don't know if it's actually available as a training for others.
Hey, Andrew.
Thank you, Americans. But you guys had me at cost effective public spending rate in the beginning. But aside from that, obviously, we have another police services in the area in Perth County. How much coordination? It sounds like you read the report once a year. Is there any, you know, handshaking of plans to make it all fit together? Because a lot of times it's just a rule separating.
Talking about between Stratford.
Yeah, they're CSPA, right?
Yeah.
The other, is that, is that a?
That. So that's more of an operational level. So I'll let Tyler speak to that.
Yes, well, I'll speak first on community wellbeing. So that brings all this. On the operation side. That's very important, and I feel that strength. That's your question.
Okay, anyone else? If not, we do have a motion that the council of the township of Perth East received a presentation from Matthew Livingston, citizen representative on the Perth County OPP detachment board, and Tyler Stewart, detachment commander, Perth County OPP regarding the Perth County OPP detachment board twenty twenty four annual activity report for information. Moved by Amanda, second by Bob, all in favor. Thank you, gentlemen. A great report.
Thank you for your time.
You're quite welcome, and enjoy the rest of your week. Okay, our next presentation is our Perth East Twinning Interest Committee. We have with us tonight Evelyn Mueller, who is the chair, Patrick Minor, the vice chair. We also have Virginia Ulrich, a member of the committee, and Justin Diaz from the County of Perth Economic Development Department. So welcome, everyone, and I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you. Thanks for having us. I just got to figure this out. Which button to press for? Yes, I'm just going to speak a few words on the Perth East Twinning Committee. And the purpose of this committee is to foster cultural, educational, economic, and social exchange between the township of Perth East and its twenty cities, promoting mutual understanding and cooperation. As per terms of reference, the committee shall provide quarterly reports to council on its activities, challenges. The committee has had three meetings to date, and the minutes have been included in the concept agenda. Members are here today. All the other members are on this list, which is included. So. So just to touch on some past events that we have had, obviously a really big one for us this year was taking forty Perth East residents to Nettasheim, our twin town in Germany. We spent three days with our hosts and after that and to say the least, you were welcomed like family. Every detail was planned for us, which we highlights included a private abbey tour, a winter steam train ride and even a traditional dance salute in our honor. We were also able to visit Nettasheim's Friendship Garden where we added the sugar maple tree with the plaque honoring our connection. We built connections across generations, including with schools. We donated Canadian themed items and our presence. Especially there's a permanent board installed in Friendship Garden that informs Nettasheim citizens and anyone So so usually it's bigger town, but doing friendships like that, connections like that. For us, it's a bit of a kind of new field, doing that in small towns. But the trip really showed how well twenty works for small town. In Nettasheim, it honestly felt like the whole town and not just because we all wore it. We stood out because we were from a small place and we were going to a small place. And that's what made our presence special. The real advantage we have is that in a town like Nettasheim, just like in Perth East, people notice, they remember and they really value it. Our levels of support from the other township of Perth East, the community of Perth East, we have lots of local service groups, businesses, individual community members, our MP and MPP and even the Canadian Embassy in Germany, as well as Perth County Tourism. At this point, I would like to invite Justin Diaz, who's here with us today, to the county. And we can also thank for congratulations, congratulations that are from the embassy.
Thank you. Yeah, so through the mayor, just pretty invited me here today to speak a bit about our county participation in this twenty initiative. So so to give a little bit of history, much of this work actually preaches myself. So I know early date for the committee was part of Perth East, you counsel, there was involvement from our economic development and tourism team to support, provide some research in the early stages of this twenty relationship. And at that time, there was obviously recognition that there was economic development and first potential involvement initiative, which is why there was involvement. And it was special and unique and not just sort of their community event, which of, of which there are many of those valuable. But that there was a unique economic development tourism component for this. So that's continues to be why the county supports this initiative and why we are a supporter, as Evelyn said. It really does support many of the pillars of our economic development strategy, potential expansion. So there's obviously local spend, that economic impact that generated when folks come from Narashime. And the case of the last time, where the city folks came, stayed, spent money, petrified their businesses. So there's an economic impact. There's future great opportunity for economic exchange opportunities for supporting our business or potential expansions. People coming here and spending money, but also exchange of business ideas, given the similar economic makeup in a culture. And then from a tourism perspective, when we see the folks visit here, are tourists and they're also very much ambassadors. So they take our materials, they share materials and really provide that tourism drive to the folks back in their country. So support their business, potential expansion or destination development and also from a workforce development perspective. I think we'll touch on some of the education exchanges that are possible. There really isn't a opportunity here for the folks in Perth County for these to have some workforce development, some exchanges and learn and what we think are done in Narashime and how they can bring those lessons back. So that's just a bit of why we're still involved in terms of our support going forward. So things that we've done in the past to support this group, distributing maps and materials. So our current brochure, our second maps, our trail maps, getting it to the hands of visitors in maritime is a really good use of those materials, providing some of our promotion materials for folks when they visit. So pretty branded items that we can provide sponsorship of meals and activities, especially when we can spend money to sponsor a meal or an item for a local business, bring that to Narashime. incentivize them to go and buy some of their own during their visit as well as really. So that's part of the kind of more of a soft time contribution. So working with the Canadian Embassy in Germany, our trade commission office, our Ontario representatives and for me, helping to build those relationships about when they go back, there's for the plants to understand economic challenges, having their opportunities. As well as some business exchange. So that's just kind of in a nutshell, a little bit of the Perth County involvement. Except back in the
Thank you. So this year at Mulan Naves, we introduced the annual Stein holding challenge, which is a fun and family friendly tradition from Germany. That is meant to bring the community closer together, but also of course to raise awareness for what we do. And we even at our MP, our MP and council is joining to this challenge. So what's next for us? We've had one really exciting connection that we've made in Nettasheim, which includes our schools. So education would be a great way to go forward and we have to be able to say a couple of words to establish most of that exchange.
Yeah, just to respect the process, won't get too much into details with names or anything else. But we did connect very closely with the principals and the English teachers in Narashime, who was really over the moon about establishing a link between the two schools. We have been in contact with some people on this side of the pond, who also shares that same enthusiasm. Where we're at now, it's just trying to figure out the logistics of how that work plus the hoops that are involved, if it is involved with the school programs. But our goal is to, to provide something as simple as pen pals or gene pals, whatever the name now. With a few other plan Bs there, incorporating the library or something like that, just to kind of start on the youth side to share those cultural differences and the differences in language and sort of those kind of basic parts there. So that's our starting point at this point. And we've have a lot of positive feedback from the parties involved. It's just a matter of getting those next steps.
Yeah, the idea is that friendships start, yeah, or keep the friendship strong. We've also received an open invitation for Nettasheim. Obviously, any person who's ever made it's always welcome to visit. It doesn't always have to be an official visit. So they have their annual celebration. We went to this year, every year, and anyone's always welcome to join. For upcoming events, the fall in this fall, or I'm thinking it's getting more into the winter, where farmers and fall is then not an option. And we'll plan to host a community presentation to share highlights that was from our visit. But also to share about our plans, who we are, what we do and hopefully raise the funds for our We're also looking into two thousand twenty-seven as Nettasheim plans to send the delegation to Perth East. The planning's already underway and many local businesses and residents already asked how they can help us. But that is, we don't have a lot of details about that yet. Considering budget and finances, all funds have been raised and managed directly by the twenty group, which is not this committee. It's friends of the twenty maybe group. And the don't, and that those funds are donated to the township committee as we did. So our income so far is five thousand three hundred ninety-five dollars, which we raised in two thousand nineteen. Most of it from local businesses, service clubs and community support. The, this also includes a one thousand dollar donation from township that we received in two thousand and three. The community impact we've so far had was the thousand dollars did get from township allowed us to welcome our guests to the Nettasheim Oktoberfest, where they performed in exchange for free. Thanks to that, the event raised seven thousand two hundred dollars, which was divided among the two local committees. And then money went right back into our community. The expenses we had, most of them were hosting, of course, in two thousand and three. Gifts and booth materials for our twenty-five trip, all of that came out of that friends fund. Township had a small direct expense this year for bits for the twenty-five trip, which was sixty-five dollars and thirty-two cents. The current balance, that is again managed by the group, is two thousand two hundred forty-two dollars. For our future needs, we of course see a visit of Nettasheim in two thousand and twenty-seven. And we have fundraisers planned, like our community presentation, which we can maybe meal. And maybe this time holding challenge can also be a future fundraiser and continue in times of work.
Okay, thank you. Questions, Jerry?
That's called question, Colin. Thanks for the presentation for the mayor. So we did have one more thing that happened, it just happened in seven, eight days. Newshyne Fire Department reached out to us, the group of our fire department and put out a challenge to plant trees. We planted a apple tree and put on a video. It's a pretty cool little video. So we actually did that this evening before council, five or six of us fired them all. We planted one at the perk. So watch for that to come out. So pretty exciting.
Yeah, it's nice to see those smaller connections that we weren't even involved in.
So just, I never told Bill this, but when we were there, we toured the fire halls. Some of us got to go in the truck down the road with the sirens going. Sure, that would never happen here. It was quite interesting to get to the next event. So, and if those who don't know, this is Jerry that's in the, conducting the orchestra here when it was, when they were here in two thousand and twenty-three. So, anyone else, Hugh?
Yeah, you talked about the schools and like, that means some probably it's a bit smaller than we are. We think of eight thousand people. Would they have, when you're talking about schools, would we be talking about like grade school, like period eight and lower? We wouldn't really be talking about high school.
Not if it's, this part, it's grade eight and lower, which is what we have in the community too. And we're just for now focusing really on like Patrick said, either camp or virtual exchange. I can see maybe them, English language, us, your history, right? Combining maybe the both, to have like some real, like real life history, the points, I mean, you know, this is a big subject that kids in grade six, seven and eight are learning about. So I think that'd be a great connection. In exchange, like the German kids getting to meet great beginning. Yeah, it's from my hometown too, yeah.
Okay, anyone else? Comments or questions? If not, we have a motion that the Council of the Township of Perth East received a presentation from Evelyn Mueller, Chair, Patrick Minor, Vice Chair, and Justin Diaz, County of Perth Economic Development Officer regarding the Perth East Twinning Committee update for information. Moved by Jeremy, second by Hugh, on favor. Carried. I want to personally thank both of you and all of the committees for all that you've done. It was an awesome experience. It's one that I'll never forget. And I hope maybe to go to Germany again someday. I still am in touch with our host families. And for those who follow it, Thomas, their mayor, he's in the midst of an election yesterday. He got acclaimed, no one ran against him, and he has an eight-year term. So good for him, you know, congratulations to him and thank you once again for all that you did. Because you said an awful lot behind the scenes, people didn't see it, but I know you were there no matter what it was.
Thank you.
Okay, we are at delegations. We don't have any delegations. Public meetings and public hearings, we do have a public meeting. So I would declare this public meeting to be open. This public meeting is being held to consider proposal zoning by law amendment affecting property currently owned by Bruce Smith. Concession aid part lot thirty-nine, twenty-nine, oh eight, nine, twenty. This meeting is an opportunity for the township to advise the public of the purpose and intent of the amendment and receive their input prior to considering adoption of an implementing bylaw. If a bylaw is adopted to implement the zoning amendment, the notice of passing will be forwarded by prepaid first class mail to various agencies of interest and others who have requested notice. An appeal to the Ontario Land Tribunal objecting to the adoption of the bylaw may be e-filed with the OLT e-file service no later than the date stated on the notice. Any persons attending this meeting who wishes to receive written notice of a bylaw passed to implement the amendment is asked to give their name and mailing address to the clerk following the meeting. No written notice except as previously noted will be given unless requested in writing following the meeting. All persons attending this meeting will be given an opportunity to be heard or make a presentation. Excuse me, I will now call on our planner Jeff Bannon to present the planning report and recommendations. So Jeff, welcome.
Thank you. So the property is located on the north side of line twenty between road one eleven and Perxford Road and is known as twenty-nine, oh eight, line twenty. Lands to be severed or designated as agriculture in the Perth County official plan. The direction from the provincial planning statement on surplus firm dwelling severances is implemented by the policies in that official plan. Official plan outlines those requirements for severances. Some of the lands are low, are zoned as agricultural A. The application proposes to rezon both the severed and retained lines to satisfy condition of consent application B thirteen dash twenty-five, which was recently heard by council. The application satisfies the surplus firm building severances policies outlined in the official plan, which required that the retained lands be rezoned to recognize that dwelling that's not accessory to agriculture. All the retained portions rezoned to create any new residential zones on the farm. Pressure in place to ensure that farmland is protected for the long-term agricultural use. Providing the means for farmers to preserve existing housing stock that may not be essential to the operations. Both the severed and retained farm, retained lots conform to the applicable provisions of the Perth East zoning bylaw. Leaving to lock coverage in front of each. No comments or concerns have been received from the public or agencies. Plans are to be severed or to be rezoned as A one and cultural zone. Lands to be retained or zone especially your cultural zone A dash five and natural resource environment zone two. N R E T zone lands are located to the middle of the property and are not being affected by the zoning application. Planning staff have identified no concerns with this application and amendment. This opinion, opinion of planning staff that the zoning bylaw amendment is consistent with the provincial planning statement in accordance with the county of Perth official plan. They'll look answering the questions.
Okay, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in opposition of the application? Seeing no one, is there anyone present who wishes to make a presentation or speak in support of the application other than the applicant or the applicant's agent? See no one. Does the applicant or the applicant's agent wish to make a presentation or speak with respect to the application? No, are any questions for members of council? I do have one question. The bylaw is going to be considered at a later date. When is that? When is later date?
So the, the application for consent was recently approved. It had delegated authority to be approved by directive planning. And it's taken place, there is a twenty-day appeal period. So as soon as that appeal period lapses and you can bring the bylaw back to be heard in front of council and heard at that time.
Okay, thank you. Council will consider a resolution regarding the planning report recommendation following the conclusion of the public meeting. Public or bylaw two oh six dash twenty twenty-five to implement the approval of the zoning application will be considered at a later date. The public meeting is now concluded and we will continue with regular meeting of council. So we do have a motion and it reads that the council So we do have a motion and it reads that the Council of the Township of Perth East received the report dated September 16, 2025, entitled zoning by law amendment Z 06 dash 2025 submitted by Catherine Richmond, Montez Richmond Phillips. On behalf of Bruce Smith affecting the lands described as part lot 39 concession eight southeast toward township of Perth East, municipally known as 2908 line 20. And council held a statutory public meeting pursuant to section 34 of the planning act with respect to zoning by law amendment Z 06 dash 2025. And the council approved in principle zoning by law amendment Z 06 dash 2025 as recommended by staff submitted on behalf of Bruce Smith affecting the lands described as part lot 39 concession eight southeast toward township of Perth East municipally known as 2908 line 20. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh on favor. Okay. Now we're moving to, we have no public hearings. We're moving to reports and the first one is a consent application submitted by Scott Patterson Patterson planning consultants on behalf of Ron and Rochelle Marzac. For pardon? Okay, Tom and Rochelle Marzac. Jeff, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Yeah. So the application was submitted by Tom and Rochelle Marzac in patient speed 33 dash 25. Properties located on the west side of Wilson Street between William Shakespeare Street and Railway Street. And it is municipally known as 3968 Wilson Street. The Perth County official plan is recently been approved by the province and the lands are now designated as neighborhood in that official plan. That neighborhood designation permits a variety of housing options as well as neighborhood commercial and institutional uses. Infill development is encouraged in areas that avoid unjustified expansion of services and that are compatible with existing area. Sub plans are also currently zoned as residential median density R2 zone. Retained lands are occupied with a singly attached dwelling, a shed, a swimming pool, deck and a fence. And the severed lands are occupied with. Public notice was provided on July 29. No comments or concerns have been received from the public and hydro one has responded and they also have no concern with the. At the time of reading the report, no comments or concerns have been received from public neighborhood. And the subject lands are within that settlement, service settlement area and existing proposed residential development is is contemplated in the relevant policies in the official plan. Assistant services available to the severed and retained lands and planning staff included a condition of approval, which is number six, to require that lands to be severed to connect to the available services. After reviewing the report and planning staff's request for condition number seven to recognize a deficient side yard width to the existing deck. The applicant revised their severance sketch to meet the side yard width requirements in the zone. Revision results in a minor difference to the requested lot sizes, but both properties still meet the requirements of the zone. If the revised sketch is approved, condition number seven can be removed from the staff recommended conditions. Severance will result in a buildable lot that will meet the minimum zoning by law lot area requirements in the location that represents good use of underutilized lands. The proposed severance is considered to be a form of infill intensification that represents good planning and staff are in support of the zoning application again on the available, sorry, of the consent application available to answer.
Hey, thanks, Jeff. Just so council is aware, Mr. Patterson is here as well. So if anyone has questions? Any questions about the report? Andrew?
Thank you. Thank you, Mary. Good. Perth East condition six A is a proponent aware of ramifications and costing for for that. Especially the potable water. I believe every all the properties on that side of the road are all drying water from a non municipal source at this point. So they're aware of the points where the costs and they're willing to proceed.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, other questions? Seeing none, we do have a motion. Oh. Okay, so is council in agreeance with the revised? Plan? Yes, no? Show hands for yes. Everybody's okay. All right. Then we're going to take out one of the conditions. So. Okay, so then the motion reads that council, the township of Perth East provides the land division committee or its delegated authority that the township of Perth East supports application file B 33 dash 25 submitted by Scott Patterson. Patterson planning consultants for land described as lot seven. Plan 550 southeast toward township of Perth East, subject to the following conditions. And there are six conditions for Perth East and I'll give you the abbreviated version. So number one condition is a letter is provided by the clerk. The township advised in the secretary treasurer of the land division committee that all the requirements, financial services and otherwise have been compiled with. Number two, that the owner provide cash in view of parkland to the satisfaction of the township. Number three, confirmation to receive that the portionment schedule for municipal drains in the area are reviewed and updated. Number four, confirmation that the severed and retained lots have each been assigned separate municipal addresses and signs. Number five, confirmation that road access to the severed and retained parcels are to the township's satisfaction. Six, that the owner developer enter into a development agreement with the township of Perth East. And the terms of the agreement be satisfactory to the township, including but not limited to A, a provision for the connection to potable water services, sanitary and storm sewage systems. B, financial securities and requirements for connection to municipal water and sanitary and C, a requirement to obtain a permit for the driveway entrance. And then the county has two conditions and they are that confirmation can be received from a solicitor that the certificate of the official be scanned and attached to the electronic registration of the transfer. And the second one, the land division committee be provided with a description that is consistent with the application and equal to that required for registration of the deed or transfer. We need a move in a second after all that moved by. Jeremy, second by Bob on favor. Karen, thanks, Jeff.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're moving to the C A O report and we have, tonight we have the time away from work policy and hours of work policy. The council will remember, we did see this policy last December and Jennifer's going to bring you new updates. Jennifer, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mary. It gets in 2024, council reviewed and approved changes to the time away from work and hours of work policy. After implementing the policy changes on January 1st, 2025, it was noted that some housekeeping items and practical practices needed to be clarified in order to ensure consistent application of these new policies. Staff does their best to ensure the policy changes and updates are all captured during the review and update process. Sometimes the act of implementing a policy and or new situations can arise. It can become apparent that future changes are needed to recently updated policies. First, let's look at the housekeeping changes. There, these are the housekeeping and minor changes included for the time away from work policy. Clarifying the sick leave, personal days, vacation time would all be treated the same when a staff, when staff are hired and when they are terminated. These entitlements are to be prorated upon hire and upon termination. For vacation, additional parameters have been outlined for the use of vacation carryover by May 31st of each year to ensure that carryover is taken and staff always have time, also have time to schedule their current year's vacation. Clarifying if vacation is paid out, it is paid out at the rate it was earned, not at the current rate if the current rate is different. Clarifying which employees are entitled to be paid bereavement leave. Including, excuse me, grandparent in law or up to one paid working day for bereavement leave as it wasn't previously addressed. Removing Employment Standards Act information and just providing a reference to ESA in the case, in cases that the ESA changes so that the policy doesn't have to be updated with those changes in the future. Clarify how sick leave will be addressed for contract employees. Clarification under jury duty that employees must submit any payments other than mileage payments to the township in order to receive their full pay. In the hours of work policy, additional definitions were added for the purpose of using short form and a definition of which employees would be included as non managerial employees. Clarification on how overtime is calculated and what is included in that calculation and what is excluded. Removing Employment Standards Act information again and just providing a reference to S ESA in case the ESA changes. So that the poly doesn't have, policy doesn't have to be updated with those changes as well. How bank loot time is paid out. Combining repetitive language into one section instead of two sections relating to on call for public works. As we were reviewing these minor housekeeping items, I noted and was receiving feedback that the short term disability section was also in need of a review and update. And as we were making these updates to the policy, it was also noted we didn't have an acting pay policy. For the short term disability, since we are looking at these minor changes, it was an opportunity to make changes to the section so that the policy didn't have to come back again to council for a third time. The the current policy requires employees to use all of their sick time prior to applying for short term disability. Once all of the sick time is taken, the employee would then apply for short term disability. It was unclear if this time of taking sick leave was considered part of the 17 weeks of short term disability or completely separate, which makes it challenging to know when long term disability would start. The long term disability is to start after the 17th week of short term disability. The short term disability also had a graduated rate of coverage based on seniority and no mention of the ability to top up with other entitlements in order to maintain 100% pay. In turn, Omer's requires full time employees to be paid 100% in order to continue to contribute to Omer's. Thus, when employees return to work after short term disability, if they wanted to maintain their Omer's pension, they would have to make the contributions. This current short term disability policy can put a financial strain on our employees during a time that is already difficult with an illness or an injury. And after they return to work, if they choose to repay their Omer's, that's an additional financial burden. This new proposal clarifies and identifies a definition of an elimination period of four days for all employees. The same short term coverage of four weeks at 100% and 13 weeks at 75% for all employees, no matter their seniority. The ability to top up to 100% if being paid at 75%. A clear transition to long term disability after 17 weeks of required. And clear wording around the process and expectations. Municipal short term disability policies do vary and some do still have a seniority based system. From an equity perspective, this approach applies to all full time permanent employees at the same level. This proposal provides financial stability for the employee for the first four weeks and the ability to then top up with other entitlements so that they can maintain their Omer's contributions. In my initial review of the policies, I noted that the township did not have an acting pay policy. Recently, the county of Perth updated their acting pay policy and it was reviewed as part of this process. As the hours of work policy was being updated, we have been combining smaller policies into other policies. It was an opportunity to add this acting pay policy. The proposed wording outlines the process of having an employee receive acting pay, what the rate of pay will be and how it will be funded. The policy provides strict guidelines that funds must be generated from existing budget resources and generally pooled from other vacant positions. The role must be vacant for four weeks in order for acting pay to be considered. All of the proposed changes were made in consultation with the payroll clerk, the treasurer and the C A O. The management team also reviewed and provided their input. In addition, there is no financial impact to the changes to these policies. Salaries are fully budgeted each year and the short term disability proposal does not incur additional expenses. The same with the acting pay policy, funds must be generated through the existing budget resources. I hope this review provides some clarity regarding the proposed changes and why they are coming forward at this time. Policy changes are a challenging process to attempt to address current needs and try to anticipate future needs. Policy updates and changes are needed regularly, especially as legislation changes and our workforce changes. I'd be happy to address any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Questions of the report, Hugh?
Just one question on page 21. If you have one to two weeks of vacation, I can have it paid. And say you actually get up three weeks, it'll be paid out with that one week will be paid at a rate of 25% less.
Through the mayor, W. Mayor McDermott. So just to clarify, so if you're carrying over two weeks, that you mean?
So like they, it says, if you unused vacation time about two weeks, so when you're done, two weeks.
Yep.
Now you're over, like you might be able to three weeks. So that last week, that third week, you can get paid out. But you don't get paid 75%. Like it says, there's a paid over less than, less 25%. So you don't want to get 75%.
Correct, for the payout, yes. Okay, I think I'm following.
Just, you know, just one, why you have that in there?
That was there before. It was already in the office. That was a change.
That was with a standard in other contracts.
Right, for me, I've only seen it here, Perth East. I haven't noted it in any other payout policies in my past.
Okay, other questions? Amanda?
Might be challenging to answer. So this is great that we're getting things clarified. I think what I'm trying to figure out, it seems like. So you mentioned about we made changes. Obviously, there's the implementation phase. There was identified some tweaks that need to be made. But from my perspective, and I'm just sharing my perspective, it looks like we've made tweaks to a lot of everything instead of just one section. I'm just like struggling with what has happened in that time. Cause like sometimes when you're doing like policy tweaks. Doesn't matter what it is, you implement it and then there's something unforeseen or something, oh, this one area needs to be dealt with. It's not typically the whole policy. So I'm just like trying to understand what may have happened. And I perhaps it's not really something that can be fully answered in open, but it's just from my perspective, I'm just sort of struggling and concerned that we may be doing this sort of thing again. Ah, so anyways, just, it doesn't give me, sorry, how do I say this in a very nice way, but it doesn't give me a lot of confidence. And I'm like very concerned. So love and appreciate what the work has been done in front of us and I think it's really important. I just, I just wanted to more so share that and I don't know if there's any insight that could be shared in this moment or not, but I just wanted to flag that from my perspective. Can just leave it as a comment, but I'm just flagging that for senior staff to take note of.
Okay, Andrew?
Thank you, Mary. Good. So the STD qualifying period is 17 weeks. Return disability qualifying period appears to be 17 weeks and then it rolls into L T D.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? If not, we do have a motion that council of the township of Perth East received the report prepared by the manager of human resources H R dash 2025 dash 05 dated September 16, 2025, entitled Time Away From Work and Hours of Work Policies for Information. And further, that council approves the amended. And further, that council approves the amended Human Resource Policy number three dash eleven. Time Away From Work and Human Resource Policy number four dash two, Hours Of Work Policy as presented. Need a move in a second, move by you, second by Andrew, on favor. It's Jennifer. Okay, we have nothing from the clerk, nothing from finance, uh public works, we have the dust suppressant contract extension, Jake.
Thank you, Mayor Aggitts. Uh this one will try and keep brief, it's a, it's an extension offer for calcium application. Through Pollards, uh who did our dust control last year, we were satisfied uh with the product. And it's, it's a product that's gone up considerably every year. Uh so I think it's, it's a good offer in terms of knowing the price heading into next year. There any questions on this one, I'll try and, try and answer those.
Okay, any questions of the report? Seeing none, we have a motion that council of the township of Perthes received a report prepared by the manager of public works. Dated September sixteen, twenty twenty-five, entitled Dust Suppressant Contract Extension. P U B dash two zero two five dash twenty-seven for information. And further, that council authorized the manager of public works to execute a one year contract. Extension with Polar Distribution Inc. for the supply and application of dust suppressant for the twenty twenty-six operating year. Moved by Amanda, second by Jerry, on favor. And uh second report, traffic on line sixty-seven, a follow up report, Jake.
Thanks again, Mary Aggitts. So as you've stated, this one covers the follow up to the correspondence that was received meeting back in July. Um so firstly, there is the issue of the intersection on sixty-seven and one twenty-one. Um as stated at that meeting, it is the jurisdiction of the county. And as council likely whereby now, there were some intersection improvements taken by the county. Including the installation of beacons on the stop signs, uh there's stop bars that have been put in. And also a center line extending uh approximately two hundred meters each side. So staff are hopeful these measures will, will improve that intersection, uh but ultimately it is the county's jurisdiction there. Um relating to the remainder of line sixty-seven, staff started by collecting some traffic data. Um we took data at two locations for a period of a week. In the blocks either side of of road one twenty-four, which is the approximate location of the Amish school there. It is near that intersection, uh to try to give us a bit of a sense on what the traffic's doing there. Um so based on the, the data captured, summary provided. And you can see there's a bit of a speeding issue there. Looking at the data, the average speed itself is about eighty-six kilometers an hour over the period. Um which doesn't jump off the page, so to speak, but I, I think, given the, the Amish. Um contribution to those counts, I think it's a bit misleading. Uh which is why we've, we've gone to an older metric that's used uh quite frequently in traffic studies. And that's known as the eighty-fifth percentile speed. So this is a speed at or below which eighty-five percent of road users travel. And in this case, eighty-five percent of the, the drivers on line sixty-seven. Um were operating at speeds of up to hundred kilometers an hour with fifteen percent exceeding that threshold. So given this, staff firstly reached out to a representative of the O P P. We actually sat down with them, provided them the data and had a discussion on that. And the intent there from, from their side is to increase enforcement in that particular area. Um and they were, they were happy to receive the data itself, it does help them coordinate their patrols. Uh next, we explored some potential traffic calming measures that might be impactful on this, on this particular road. Um as mentioned in the report, drivers typically operate at speeds that they feel safe to do so. Um in the case of line sixty-seven, it's a fairly wide open road. Um clearly substantial sightlines, and there's minimal development. Um so that said, staffer of the opinion that reducing the speed through this entire road segment. Is not likely to have significant an impact. Um on line twenty-nine, we did this back in twenty nineteen, reduced from an eighty down to a seventy. We collect some data there last year, and the eighty-fifth percentile speed there. Is ninety-eight kilometers an hour, so nearly, nearly equivalent to the line sixty-seven. So, as such, uh staff. Staff shifted their focus kind of the area of the, the Amish school where safety is of greatest concern. Um and there's a couple of options that, that staff investigated and have proposed here tonight to council. Option one um would just involve simply reducing um the speed down to a sixty. Through the area of the school, um kind of either side of the school, so to speak. This would just involve signage. This may reduce speeds, but uh staff do feel that it would be better suited to be supplemented with some additional traffic calming measures. And that brings me to option two, which is essentially option one with the addition of digital radar speed devices. Which we have here on Mill Main. Um this would highlight driver's speed coming through that particular zone. Um but I would caution council with this one, um as there are certainly other schools that are. Within sixty kilometer an hour zones that do not have these, it might uh create some requests in that sense. The, the third option involves a slightly different approach. It's a, a speed reduction zone involving uh flashing beacons at either side of the area. Um the county actually has a few of these installed, there's, there's some in Warburg. Um down one thirty-one, there's, there's some as well. But basically, it's, it's designed to come on only when school is in session. Typically, the busy times when people are coming in and out of the school. Um so we would have to work with the school to coordinate times properly. Um but this option is somewhat unique, staff feel. This school is the only school on an eighty kilometer an hour maximum road that is paid in the township, I've, I've looked at all the schools. Um and, and this, I don't think there would be a precedent set if we did do this. Um but ultimately, that's up to council. Um the fourth option is to, to simply do nothing. Um and see what the impact of the intersection improvements have done. Um and further to that, we are going to continue to monitor the. The traffic data to see if it hits the merit for line painting. Right now, it does not, so we'll continue to, to monitor that. Um additionally, um in twenty twenty-eight, I believe. Uh in our forecast, we have proposed repairs for that bridge uh through the S curve on line sixty-seven. Uh which we are also intending on extending the gargrels there to improve safety through that area. Uh but ultimately, there's, there's a fair bit of information for, for council to consider. If there are any questions, I will do my best to answer those.
Any questions other report, you?
Uh when you talk about the data, I have seen public bicycles actually registered on the systems, so then you have the figure of the way.
Correct.
Hey, anyone else? Jerry?
Thanks, Mayor, thanks Jake, a lot of information to unpack here. My first, I, option one. Words. Uh one, one thirty-one right to one twenty-one, it's sixty. One nineteen. To reduce the speed, what about if we made it, um well however. Distance from the school to the west, start the sixty, just keep it right, sixty, great. Set up, send me to the school, it's not that far, you know, reduce to sixty, you do sixty. And then go to Amy again for less than a mile. Then come up. Not sure after our west of six to seven from the school, but it's sixty, right? Option one.
Through the mayor, yeah, I, we, we certainly did consider all of these scenarios. This report started and ended very differently. At the end of the day, it's. It is a challenging decision, um you, you do unintentionally, so to speak, create precedent for other roadways. And there are other roadways that are very similar classifications to these across the township. Um and you do run the risk of having residents. Um request that this very same thing happened to those roads. Um I can think of several off the top, line thirty-six, thirty-nine, forty-two, you're down the list. Um there is obviously a cost of this stuff. Um and I, the reason I ended where I ended was, was due to the, the precedent, so to speak. Uh but these are all options for council, for sure.
Jeremy?
Yeah, the, one of the concerns I had was with sixty-seven between one thirty-one and one twenty-four. Very one twenty-nine, that section like you're talking about, you kind of come to the top of the crest of that hill, and we've actually directed. I make a point every time I'm downtown Milverton, when I see cyclists ask where they came into town, and they're coming in on the trail now, more often. Off the trail by my house at Bocherts, because we've directed them with the new trail. To use sixty-seven across that bridge. And then jump on the trail and come into town over here. And when you come to the top of the crest of that hill, you go down, you pass the entrance of that trail onto sixty-seven. And then you're going around that S bend, and it does narrow quite a bit at the bridge. So like, that being an eighty in itself is actually probably the most danger, absent the school. From like one twenty-four till where we put that trail onto our road, the cycling trail. That's probably the most dangerous section of the road now, absent the school. Um because you're coming over that at a good speed, and then we're directing, we've actually directed cyclists to go, to go that direction inadvertently, I guess. Um and then cross the bridge, right? So that is a concern when I read the report that I'm like, all right, that area almost needs to be reduced in some manner too. And we do have that built up intersection at sixty-seven and one, one, one twenty-nine, sorry. One twenty-nine and sixty-seven, you've got those houses at the corner, I often see kids running about. So I wonder if there's something we can do, if it starts somewhere around where we've. You know, if, if we reduce the speed somewhere around the area that we've added that trail that enters our road to the other side of the school. That's where my thoughts went.
Through the mayor, a couple of things, um so there, there is signage um to reduce down to sixty through that S curve. Um their warning signs, so they're not ready to tour the signage. Um but I certainly understand the concern with that area. Um something for council, they may not be aware of at this point. Um staff actually have a meeting with the G to G folks next week uh to discuss this particular section. We're not sure what they're going to propose yet, and I'm sure you'll see it. But they are certainly looking to include that particular stretch, given the concerns there. Um so we'll see what comes of that meeting, um but again, it is, it is a sixteen through a warning process, but it is not enforcing it. You're heading east, I, I think it's just either side of, of the bridge area, or the S curve, that's, it's more or less confined to the, just the curve. Yep. Yeah, I just asked Matthew to the, the G I S.
Hey, anyone else, Bob?
Well, I do think this is an excellent report, it could interchange with any other number of roads that have recently been paved, because I think soon the pave. Act, my first reaction is we'll just make it a seventy and save all the complaints, petitions that happen. And I think the typical speeds that we're seeing. Are exactly the same on any other road, this one just happens, unfortunately, I have a focus for a while, right? I don't really see that there's a whole lot that will fix what the delegation presented or the petition. Made us aware of. Any of these roads are going to attract higher volumes of traffic in the future, I'm surprised there's not more of them. Truck traffic. Twenty-nine, that would have a lot of truck down, right? Anyway, it is, I don't know if I can use those rates to use these roads. It's more enforcement from the O P P. Discuss that. Review of what has been done by the county, maybe can come back to us again. Hang on to Jerry's comment about option one to implement some speed in, in a certain area, but. Think you're just going to continue to have this problem. On line forty-three, you know, the county road. Area of the northeast Oak School, there are sixty kilometers on change in the flashlights at certain times. I really doubt that that is effective. Nice that it's there, maybe a few people slow down, but any school area, doesn't matter what school it is, are busy at certain times of day. Drop off, pick up, and people are going to work, take care of. What your reality, we live in. These are just, yeah, I'm. Wishful that we can make a difference, but I highly don't think people come back with any potential. Which are the same, we made a change here. Other than taking up the pavement, this is going to be a continued problem, so I think. Do a couple of things, see if it works and cross that off and visit it again when. Add in more traffic and our request.
Hey, anyone else, Andrew?
Uh thank you, Mary Good, so um councillor, like no one kind of touched on it a little bit with. Kid, does the data that we got, does it drill down into uh, you know, buggies and scooters, but does it do? Trucks, you know, is it passenger cars in times of day, is it commuter traffic? I guess it must be, just wonder where they're going or where they're coming from.
Through the mayor, I, yeah, I certainly can't speak to where they're coming to, from or going, but uh I think even the delegation did speak to. It being picked up on a Google Maps route between here and Kitcher area, so that would be my first thought. But the, the device itself, it can pick up, it picks up a vehicle length. So it can be a little bit misleading, in particular with horse and carriage. Uh I don't know how that device would pick this up, to be quite honest with you. Uh but it does, it does basically give you a number of vehicles that are considered large, medium. That's, that's all we get at that place.
It'd become a bypass. Section to the east got paid, right? Like if I'm heading to Waterloo, that's the route I take now. Because you can get all the way onto Benjamin Road with a couple of zigzags through there without going through many.
I, I don't mind twenty-nine, been mentioned a couple of times and way back. Like two, two and a half, three terms ago, um some contact was made with some of the trucking companies. Um and they, they, it was short-lived, but they did help and saying, yeah, that's unacceptable, right? So that's why I'm asking where they're going, where they're coming from, it's a large plan, it's all the same workers. Uh mayor or C A O phone call to their higher-ups and saying, hey, we, we think we have a problem, can you put something on your board?
Oh yeah, I would, I would move option.
Oh, yeah, I would, I would move option one, and then having, you know. And I know that only works for a while and stuff like that.
Okay, anyone else with any comments? I just have a couple. They were alluded to, the county has put in place in front of all the schools on the county roads, those devices that flash sixty. The other things that they have put in place is all the little villages have a speed sign when you go in. I live in, or live near Warburg, I watch when I'm driving out, what the cars are doing, going in, they're all braking. As soon as they see how fast they're going, they brake. I'm not sure they brake at the schools, because it doesn't show how fast they're going, but those other ones do make people brake and slow down. So this, for what it's worth, I live on line forty-two, there are bicycles, the bicycling group, every Sunday, they're on our road. And sometimes they're the width of the road, sometimes they're in a single file. But the cars traveling on line forty-two scare the crap out of me when I mow in the lawn, because I stop and let them go by, because they don't even slow down. They don't even slow down when you get, you beat standard, they're getting the mailbox, and they'll wig by me, like, I could almost touch the car. That's how close they get to me. It's scary. And the police can't be everywhere, we do call them. If we get phone calls, Mike and I try to ask them to patrol areas, just, you know, if you get phone calls, let us know. Jerry knows through the police board or whatever, but we do have been caught. So anyway, Hugh is was willing, wanting to move option one. Do you have a a dollar amount too, or are you just moving option? Two thousand, okay. All right, Jerry was second up. So the motion reads that Council of the Township of Perth East received a report prepared by the manager of Public Works dated September sixteen twenty twenty-five entitled Traffic on Line Sixty Seven Follow-Up Report, PUB dash two zero two five dash two eight for information. And further, that council select option one, and if any authorized staff to procure the associated oh, I pronounced that word, after your after your tenetses.
Yep.
Which are traffic calming adjacent to the Amish Haroko School on line sixty-seven, and further, that council approved the capital budget amendment for the cost of two thousand dollars to be funded from the Public Works Capitol Research. And Hugh moved that, and Jerry seconded. Is there any more questions, Jeremy?
Yeah, through the mayor, I I'm not sure what their sole reason is for this, other than there isn't a gap, obviously, in the trail there. But certainly, I'm happy to go through council on that.
Okay, anyone else? If not, all in favor? Carrie? Okay, thanks, Jake. Now we're moving to no reports from building and parking by law enforcement under Parks and Recreation. We have the concession agreement bylaw. Becky?
Thanks, Mayor Rhonda. As council is aware, we've had the concession booths rented or used by a third party for operations of the of of the concessions. The one that we had, the operator from last year has decided not to renew their agreement, so we've put it out for requests for submissions of operating it. Along with putting out the request for proposals, also contacted service groups and minor hockey association as well. See if they were interested, kind of at the eleventh hour, then Diane Laura, who has operated the concessions in the past under Marcello's, has come forth and with the interest to operate it again for this season. So just asking for council support to sign an agreement with Diane Laura.
Okay, any questions? No, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East received the concession agreement bylaw report, PRCS dash two zero two five dash zero eight, prepared by the manager of Parks, Recreation and Community Services, dated September sixteen twenty twenty-five for information. And further, that council gives three readings to bylaw forty-one dash two zero two five, being a bylaw to authorize the signing of an agreement with Diane and Marcello Lara for the management and operation of concession services at the Perth East Recreation Complex. And further, that council repel bylaw forty-one dash two zero two four, being a bylaw to enter into an agreement for the management and operation of the excuse me, of the concession services at the Perth with Adele Matheson. We have a mover in a second here, we're repelling the bylaw. Moved by Hugh, second by Amanda, on favor. Carrie? Thanks, Becky. Okay, we have no reports from fire, we're under correspondence, we have a notice of application for approval to expropriate some land from part lot one, two, and three, on plan forty-four R sixty-three thirty-five. And this is at the corner of road one eleven and seven and eight highway. So any questions on that correspondence? Now, we have a motion that Council of the Township of Perth East received a notice of application for approval to expropriate land parts one, two, and three on plan forty-four R dash six three three five, excuse me, highway seven and eight, road one eleven for information. Moved by Hugh, second by Andrew on favor. Carried? Okay, council reports and committee reports, does anybody have any verbal or reports on committees they sit on, Jerry?
Yes, thanks, Mayor. Norwich Business Association, they should have reported this last council meeting, we awarded our pillar of the community, a C D M B A to Mr. Patrick Miller. So congratulations to Patrick Minor. Oh, my gosh. My fault.
Start again.
Patrick Minor. It's a pillar of the community, he's part of the Lions Club, the twinning committee is a witness this evening, the blood donor clinic, and just as a thank you, doesn't want thanks, it does its great job. So Patrick Minor is awarded a pillar in the community for two thousand.
Thanks, Jerry. Anyone else? And then we needed a motion to accept the verbal report, moved by Jeremy, second by Hugh on favor. Carrie? Okay, we have bylaws first, second, third, and final reading. We have one bylaw that is bylaw forty-one dash two zero two five, being a bylaw to enter an agreement for per concession booth services. And the bylaw listed above be read a first, second, third, and final time. Moved by Jerry, second by Hugh on favor. Carrie? Do we have any notice of motions? Any other business? Any announcements? And we, Jerry?
So surprise Bill didn't mention this, but through the, the battle of the badges is coming up over the nineteenth perk, from the free skate from twelve thirty to one fifteen, and then the game between fire and O P P. One thirty, so that's October nineteenth. And I should mention that, although one reason most to make are the victim services.
Okay. Do not have a closed session. And we're down to confirmatory bylaw. So we have a motion that bylaw forty-two dash two zero two five, being a bylaw to confirm the proceedings of council of the Township of Perth East, and it's regular meeting held on September sixteen twenty twenty-five. You read a first, second, and third time. Moved by Bob, second by Hugh on favor. Carrie, and the last motion of the night is that we adjourn the meeting of council at eight thirty-five P M. Moved by Amanda, second by Jeremy on favor. Carrie? Thanks, everyone, enjoy the rest of your night. Bye.